Called the meeting to order and asked everyone to stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Best pick to call the roll?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Drydenfall.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Here.
Trustee Flender. Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Present.
All right, need a motion for the approval of the agenda and accompanying amendments.
So move second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, approval of minutes.
Move approval of the February 19, 2013 minute, second.
Are we having a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this time, we're gonna insert something in the agenda there, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Jeff Six to if he would come forward since Vice President Bodie is not here today, and Jeff, I think you have some introductions for us.
Okay, it does work, huh? Okay. Yeah, I wanna introduce the buildings and grounds crew, the maintenance, custodial, and grounds, and grounds crew that came in and worked on the last two snows. They spent about an average of 510 hours for each snow here. Some of the guys, especially the grounds crew, basically lived on site for about three days. And then we had some of the other crew that came in and shoveled like eight hours straight just to try to get the place open for everybody, so if you could bear with me, I think everybody's hanging out back there.
Come on forward, fellas and ladies, if there are any ladies. You're welcome. Maybe the canine's female, I don't know.
Tony Samble, he's the supervisor of grounds, he's the guy that spearheads the whole operation. Then I'm just gonna go down in alphabetical order hopefully. Wade Bronson. Chris Ben Roestro. Tom Felhoffer is not here this morning. Bobby Fletchall. Justin Longoria. Robert Maloney. Robert Page. Scott Parsley. And Matt Peterson, I'm not sure if he made it or not. Matt Peterson is actually in the social science division, oh, there he is.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Matthew Powell, Chris Powell. Tony Samble, Sean Shavy. Bob Schwartz. Michael Smith, Michael Smith is not here today, he had all, he had a death in the family. Gabe Snowden and Adrian Welch. These are the guys that got us open and running again.
Well, I think they deserve a round of applause. On behalf of the board and certainly all of the staff, and Dr. Givens, the faculty, and everyone at Kansas City Kansas Community College, we appreciate your hard work and your dedication on a daily basis for that matter, but we know what extraordinary efforts are required when we have events such as those large snows that we experienced here over the last couple of weeks. And so, our hats literally are off to you, and we thank you very, very much. Appreciate it very much. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
And for bringing everybody and letting everybody be here, and now we know you've got lots of things to tend to, so that's why we wanted to get you up early and get you going here, so.
Can I ask Bob Schwartz too, to raise? Old neighbor, I just, I didn't think I'd recognize you, but good to see you.
Other board members, comments? Well done, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, those are some things that sometimes we tend to take for granted, and, but you know, there's a, anybody who shoveled your own sidewalk or driveway knows, there's a lot of hard work involved in that, and how fortunate we are to have such a capable, dedicated, you know, crew to keep us up and running, so. Okay, item number five, audience to patrons and petitioners, is there anyone that would care to address the board this morning? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, just in case we wouldn't know it.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Madam President, Board. I am Herschel Martin from 1917 North 83rd Terrace in Kansas City, Kansas. I would like sometimes to start my comments with a bit of humor, but I better not this morning. Let me share with you some concerns. Most community college hours are taught by adjuncts, and believe me, I understand contracts, those several on the board, and I have dealt back and forth in contractual matters. But, under the new contract, hours are being taken away from adjuncts by full-time members in such a way that it's really beginning to have an impact on the adjuncts, so I'd like to express that concern. And now the adjuncts have been slammed in the side, in a sense, by the limit of tutorial hours. I received yesterday a letter indicating that beginning June 2013, modification in your current tutorial schedule may occur, and it apparently is on the basis of the new insurance law. We'll talk about that, and what's happening is, if I teach three hours, I can tutor 20; six hours, I can only tutor 14, or nine hours, I can only tutor six hours. And tutoring by the adult faculty is done by the adjuncts. I'll express what I think will be an impact for that in a moment. Another issue, and believe me, I was at an office in Johnson County for four years with presidents from Shawnee Mission, Blue Valley, and all the other school districts, and I'm aware of the disparity in the taxes and the incomes of the two counties. And yet, I'd like to express that at the top level, there's a $188 difference in the hours paid here per hour as opposed to Johnson County, and that also has an impact and might contribute to some change. If we cannot tutor, maybe more money in hours might help make up for that to some extent. Another issue is that if the adult adjuncts can't tutor, we will, I believe, leave our students without professional tutors. Students come in and help some, but the adjuncts come down, and we are the ones that have helped develop the curriculum, we know the area, they're very confident in us. If we cannot adjunct, they won't have adjuncts. And I have another question. I've taught at public and private schools since retiring from the Kansas City, Kansas District. I obviously am over 65. I'm on Medicare. Would it have, will it have an impact on those of us? Now, those school districts didn't provide insurance because already had it, so if we are, if we already have Medicare, do we fit into the mold of having to have insurance by the, the community college? So, I wanted to raise those issues, and thank you very, very much for listening this morning.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin. I think there are a couple of things there we can think about, and that we could check into, particularly the last point you mentioned, and we'll, we'll certainly do that. Is there any other question or comment? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, communication, Madam President, item seven, or six.
We have, Mr. Chair, we have one, a resolution regarding the consumption of alcoholic liquor in accordance with KSA 41719I. Whereas Kansas statutes annotated 41719C prohibits the consumption of alcoholic liquor on public property except where expressly permitted by law, and whereas the Kansas City, Kansas Community College is authorized under Kansas law to exempt from the provision of KSA 41719C specified property which is under the control of the KCKCC Board of Trustees and which is not used for classroom instruction. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of KCKCC, Section 1, KCKCC hereby exempts for Thursday, April 25, 2013, the reception areas of the Upper Jewels Center from the requirements of KSA 41719C. Section 2, this exemption is granted in connection with the holding of the Advancement Council Reception hosted by the KCKCC Advancement Council as follow-up to the Listening Project.
Okay.
And it needs Board approval.
All right.
So move second.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Daniels, a second by Trustee Rios. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we'll get the resolution signed.
Thank you.
Any other communication?
That's it.
That's it, okay. We'll move to your report then.
Basically, my report is around the issues in the legislature. Yesterday was brutal for us.
Yes.
We took an $8,101,228 hit from non-tiered tech and $5.6 million from tiered tech, so those are, that will affect technical education programs. And the information is that $250 to $300 million worth of state budget cuts are still needed, and so, we'll just wait and see.
This came out of House Appropriations.
Yes.
So the Senate's still, you know, working it and so forth, but it was a bad day yesterday for us.
It was a bad day yesterday.
We've been doing well until yesterday.
We have.
Those cuts, statewide cuts.
Yes.
We don't know what our particular share of that would be, would be significant, whatever it is.
No, we don't know yet.
Would you, would you state those, that total amount again?
It's 8.1 and 5.6.
Okay, thank you.
8.1 non-tiered and 5.6 from tiered.
Is it all colleges or just community?
All universities and colleges, yeah.
Technical programs though. Primary community colleges.
Yeah, those are, it's gonna be primarily community colleges and tech colleges.
Yeah. And the other bill that we're watching is the concealed weapon, SB 21. It is, while the language is not in the bill for community colleges, we still have to watch because it will definitely affect us and the decisions we make about how we're gonna deal with conceal and carry on campus. So those are the two issues that are outstanding for this period.
Okay.
And that's the extent of my report.
Let's see, we have the strategic plan here.
Oh, yes. I forgot.
Comments on that?
I wondered why those people from the committee were sitting there looking so nice this morning.
Well, we couldn't forget it because it's over half of our notebook this morning.
Absolutely.
It's an amazing amount of work that looks really outstanding for the benefit of those of you out here, and I know probably everybody seated out here had something to do with it in some way.
Absolutely. And we wanted the board to see exactly where we started and where we ended, that we wanted you to see the progression of our work. And so, we have our two leaders who will introduce the rest of the group, Dr. McDowell and Dr. Sankey Min. They have done an awesome job. I'm telling you, this group has met, and they have put effort even over the break. They were here working during that time, along with faculty even. So we, so we have gotten to know each other very well, and we have really enjoyed the work. It did not seem so much as a, as a laborious task. It was really exciting, and as we worked through the process, it became a labor of love, I think. Dr. McDowell.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep it brief, though we have a lot to share, and you had an opportunity to receive it in your board reports, but just for the sake of those who do not have a copy of the strategic plan, or at least our work in progress, I would like to read off the member, the names of the members who are on the strategic plan development team. Our members include our vice presidents, Dr. Tamara Ajafar, our Vice President of Academic Affairs, Mr. Brian Bodie, our Vice President of Administrative and Student Affairs, Carolyn Alzendorf, our Representative for Staff Senate, Sean Darrett, our Staff Representative, Darren Elliott, our Faculty Representative, Dr. Doris Givens, our President, Dr. Marvin Hunt, our Dean, Ms. Jessie Johnson, a Faculty Member, Ms. Anita Crandike, a Staff Member, myself, Dr. Denise McDowell, co-chair, Dr. Sankey Min, co-chair, Mr. Dr. Cliff Smith, our Dean, I'm sorry, Mr. Cliff Smith, our Dean, Dr. Curtis Smith, our College Senate Representative, Ms. Tanya Townsend, a Faculty Member, Ms. Carice White, our Faculty Senate Representative, and we're still in search of a Staff Senate Representative. So those are the members who've been, I mean, a Student Senate Representative. We're still, these are the individuals who've been working diligently with us on this process to bring it to this point. If you look at the work in progress, the kind of brief phase of our accomplishments, we think we've done phases one, two, and we're moving into phase five, but one of the things that I would like to call it is, I talked to a colleague, he kinda helped us understand how to break this down in a few brief comments, and one being an awareness phase. We went through an awareness phase of meeting with the college community to have campus forums, to have campus roundtables, to meet with the deans, and to meet with you, and to meet with the Advisory Council to talk a little bit about what we were doing, the strategic directions, and how that was to work. Then we went through another phase of engaging the community in understanding what the process was all about, how we were hoping to get campus-wide participation with getting the action steps. And as a result of that, 450 action steps were submitted from across the campus. Then we're entering a belief phase where we have people beginning to believe that it really is participatory. And Sankey will talk a little bit about that data collection process, and then we'll move into the action phase, that after we have presented to you, and we've presented to the campus again tomorrow, then we'll start working on the timelines and the measurable outcomes, and then how we will measure what we're actually talking about accomplishing here, and we have a lot of people who are really vested in the process. It's our understanding that people are more likely to support what they help create, and we think our campus community has worked very hard to create a document that we can all be proud of. Dr. Min.
The 450 action item collected from faculty and staff was really overwhelming at first, and our task was to reduce it down to some manageable number of action steps so that we can carry them out. What we tried to do was, as we're going through each item, and we debated, and we discussed, and tried to decode what the action step is calling for, and as we were going through the each item, we noticed themes started to emerge. For example, Campus Lab came out three, four times, and Course Shell idea was, came up 11, 12 times, and Faculty Development, and several times, and then, and using those themes, we just reduced each action item to just the one or two words like Faculty Development, Course Shell, so that we can see through what each action item is calling for. And then we basically made into single items all the action items that are related according to the themes, we made into single action items, so that that way we could reduce it down to number of action items. Basically, we're trying to summarize what our faculty and staff said they would do to achieve these goals. And then the second thing that we tried is, even though some of the items are not repeated many times, if we thought that that action item is important enough to include in, in that goal on action items to achieve that particular goal, we kind of included. And also, of course, a lot of action items are not included, sometimes because the action items are too much on that particular category, and sometimes that category, that action item is not fitting to the particular goals. But all these action items are not lost, it will be archived in our inventory of action items, and as we're achieving each item through, maybe next year we make an adjustment and then include other items that we left out. So that was the process that we went through to achieve the streamlined version of the document that you see here.
The next step, once we had gotten our massive document, sorry about that, once we had gotten the document down to something that was not 90 pages, we went over it, this core group, and then we took it to the whole committee, gave the committee the material, had them go over it, and make edits, suggestions, had we captured the idea of all these action items, or in fact, had we missed something? And so they made those suggestions. And I just wanna make a comment about, since I am the faculty rep on the core group, about the faculty's reaction to this process. And it's been enthusiastic eventually. They were skeptical at first, but the idea that in, within the divisions, the departments, the whatever, they could provide feedback, they could talk back and forth, and then they could see the suggestions that came out of it. It's been a really positive experience, and I wanna credit a lot of that to the process that we went through to try to be truly participatory.
And I would echo on behalf of the staff, Jessie's reaction from, from staff employees as well. At first, people were a little skeptical, they want my input on the strategic plan, but then, as you can see, the floodgates opened to get 450 action steps submitted, and that massive document was quite the undertaking for all of us. Following the presentation of the streamlined action steps to the strategic plan development team, that draft of the action steps was to be presented to the Dean's Council. Mother Nature, as we know, had other plans however, and we ended up rescheduling from February 25th to March 6th to present the document to the Dean's Council. Again, as another filter, there was the opportunity to discuss the final draft outcome, ask questions, maybe argue a little about things that were in there, and make some additional changes, which leads to our presentation here today.
One of the things that we particularly wanted to emphasize was the fact that in the 450 items that were submitted, none of them were considered irrelevant or unimportant. Some of them were considered to be departmental goals, some of them were even considered to be performance goals. So what you have in the streamlined version is the actions, the strategic directions, the goals, and some of the key themed action steps. What we're hoping to do at this particular point, that if there are recommendations or changes that you would like to make or submit to us, we will include those things when we submit to the campus forum tomorrow. If there are additional recommendations or changes that people would like to modify and tweak, we will include those as well. It will then go back to the Strategic Planning Committee, and we will start the process of fine-tuning even more, breaking it down even more, creating timelines, measurable outcomes, and a way for us to get busy on what we have to do. So what we have as far as our belief and continuing on the belief is to continue to refine, tweak, and then finalize the document. What you have here is still in draft form and considered to be a work in progress. Some would even consider it to still be about a balcony view of what we're hoping to do, and we're hoping to get it down to that minute level where we can mine it, fine-tune it, and see the workable steps. Then our next phase will be to market and actually launch it for fall of 2013, incorporate an evaluation phase, and continue to make adjustments as appropriate. This is our process at this particular point, and we're open to answering any questions that you may have.
First of all, again, very appreciative of the time and effort being put into this, and the number of people who are participating, I think is, is very commendable. But one term that I did not hear in your presentation, budget, is very significant in regards to resources to enable this document to become live, first of all. Budget will have a major impact on timeline. Budget will have a major impact on follow-through and follow-up. And I really would appreciate, within the document itself, I believe dollars should be attached. It may be a guesstimate, and we would understand that as a trustee, but with the budget process really a month away, the more guesstimating that can be done, really the better it would be for the institution, as we want then to have credibility for this process. See, there was a question, what I heard you say, of people saying, "Oh, you want our input?" Well, they don't really, you know, they wanna hear what we have to say. Now they've said it. And so now it becomes, were we listening? It's, this is almost an internal listening project from the external listening project that, that we had with the community. And so I think that this is very important to attempt to follow up on, but maybe it's just the finance chair hat that I wear, but I, I just can't see, you know, it is, where you put, put your dollars is usually where the action is, and where there is minimum resource, and there is a lot of attention there. So I'd like you to speak to that, and then, I am concerned about student input. And, and our students are so diverse, I don't know if one representative can, for lack of a better word, do justice to, you know, the average age is, is 30. But then we have our, our younger students that we're trying to get involved in, in post-secondary education, of course, having our outreach in workforce development and that, so I mean, there's a number of different types of student, and I think having them to, their voice of what assists them in being successful, because at the end of the day, all this should be geared around student success. And so, I'd like your reaction.
We could share this. I, I, we concur. One of the things that we did not want to do is impede people's dreaming by putting a dollar amount on it right away. Because what people tend to do when you say, "Well, it can only cost this much, it only costs that much," they stop dreaming big, because they're concerned about, "Well, it will cost too much." So that's why we went through the process that we did. The next phase of this, when we talk about the measurable outcome, a component of that is the resources. What will it cost in human capital and monetary capital to actually make this come to pass? So when you see this next time with the measurable outcome, you will see a column that has resources that includes both the human capital and the monetary capital to make it come to pass. As far as the response in, in reference to the student representative, one of the challenges we have is that Student Senate meets at the same time this committee meets. This committee meets on Wednesdays, and it meets on the second This committee meets on Wednesdays, and it meets on the second and third Wednesday of every month, from 2:00 to 4:00, and that's also when Student Senate meets as well. What we had at one of the roundtable discussions that we had was Student Senate representative and another student who was not on Student Senate that did provide us with some input. What we have talked about doing, as much as we've done with faculty and with staff, is that once this is done, that we may need to get on the agenda for Student Senate so that we can present it to them as well. So if there is anything before it becomes a final document that they would like us to tweak, that we can do so as well. So we know that our student body is diverse, but much like our faculty, much like our Senate that sends their representative, our hope is that those individuals are going back, talking to their constituents, and getting feedback as to what their desires are. And so as we put this out on MyDOT and we share it in other forums, we're hoping to get additional feedback as well.
Denise, I, I have a question about the process and the time when we can get community groups, particularly, I'm thinking of the Advancement Council. And I, I read through and paid really close attention to the goal number three, and particularly on marketing and communication. And I know this is a really important and priority piece for the Advancement Council, and they would love to, to look at even the draft and provide some input where it's appropriate. What can you tell me or advise me that I could talk to them about? Is it too premature to, to share the detail under the draft?
I think much like we did with the corrections, and we came and talked to the Advancement Council, I think sharing this document with all our constituents is not premature at this particular point. This document is available to be shared, and you should feel as if that is okay to do so. Yes, any feedback that they can provide us as far as timelines, as far as resources as they see it, would be a welcomed addition. If at any point they would like to participate in the campus forum, they're welcome to attend as well. And we know that the campus forum is tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00. And so if they would like to attend that particular forum, they may do so. And I believe it's in 2325, it's in room 2325. So anyone, including students, who are wanting to attend the campus forum, and of course, our Board of Trustees, if you have the time and you would like to attend to hear the additional comments, please feel free to attend. So if you find that there is another way for us to engage the Advancement Council, we'd be more than happy to oblige.
Wonderful. And, and I did notice that, that you did put a dollar amount, which I was glad to see, you put a dollar amount on bringing someone in to help develop the overall plan. And so I'm hoping we can include that in the budget, because I think this, this gives us a really strong starting point to help the college implement that goal number three. So I, I enjoyed reading through it. I, it was, I was very impressed, so thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Ash, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to congratulate you on the work you did, Dr. Givens and the committee for collaboration, openness of the great, of the process, I think it's wonderful. I was so impressed by the 450, and I'm glad to hear that you're going to archive those. You had to have a hard time eliminating some of those from the final, because I was so impressed by the level of thinking that had gone into those 450 items that were delivered to you, that obviously people take this very seriously and were very concerned about moving the college forward. Secondly, I, I really was impressed by the personalization is in the plan on the individual student. I mean, I think the committee really took to heart the fact that we need to really folk, begin to focus on advising and counseling the individual student for success. And it runs all the way through here. Obviously, faculty, staff, whoever is going to have to step up and be more involved in that process. But I thought the fact that you really recognized that and said, you know, we need to really focus on individual student more, I thought was really important and really helped the student's success. And lastly, I'd just say, as hard as this is to believe, you're actually doing the easy work now, even as hard as it is. So I was really glad to hear about what you're going to do next, and what you're going to do over the next one, two, three, four, five years to make this a living document. I mean, you have such a great start here, and obviously you've had the attention and the, and the trust or respect of the, of the faculty and the staff. But what you do from this point on is going to be the key factor. And I was so happy to hear about it's a living document, that you're going to continue to look at it, you're going to continue to tweak it as you go along. But again, congratulations, I think you really have a document here that can really help move this college forward. Dr. Givens, again, congratulations to you and your committee for doing this. Thank you.
All right, team, congratulations up to this point, and thank you so much. I don't have anything to add, but just echo everything that was said, and so, very comprehensive, and we'll continue to pour through it and be amazed by it, I'm sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to you, please, to my report.
Okay, Dr. Givens, thank you. Now we had, let's see. Yeah.
Ooh, acceptance of the president's report.
Second. All right, we have a motion to accept the report in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. All right, we'll move to item number eight, personnel, and we'll hear from Dean Marks. And trustees note that there, you do have an amendment on this agenda item as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to draw item eight under the personnel report, eight, A, one, and two, for your information, and ask for your approval for the recommendations, items eight, B, one through 16, with a correction to number 14 on the amendment to the agenda.
Move approval of personnel recommendations as amended.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dean Marks. All right, let's move to item number nine, the vice president's report for academic chairs.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I just, on the new director of athletics and student administrative services, just like to request that, that we meet that individual our next Board of Trustees meeting, and Dr. Givens, if you could ask him to just kind of give a brief outline as to how he, his vision and that state to us in the meeting, that would be appreciated.
Will do.
Item number nine.
Thank you. Before I get into my report, I'd like to ask Darren Elliott to come up here. He has some news to share with you.
Really?
Yes.
That's so rare.
We're shocked.
I hope you don't get tired of seeing me. I am excited to be here today. I can't tell you how excited I am. If you seen me over the last couple of weeks, you would know how nervous I was. I saw Dr. Daniels at College Senate last Thursday. Spent a great deal of time in Vice President Bodie's office last Wednesday as well, talking about the fact that we were waiting to hear whether our team would be selected into the NDT National Debate Tournament this year. You may remember, last year was the first year we had ever qualified to that event. It is the college debate version of the NCAA basketball tournament. It's the most elite tournament in the country. You have to be one of the best teams, and typically, it's fielded with teams that are juniors and seniors from the nation's best universities. Only nine times in the history of the tournament since the 1940s had a community college qualified. The only time a community college had qualified back-to-back was Odessa College from Texas in 1981 and '82, until we got the phone call yesterday. I should say, until I got the email. Tell you the story about that. The director of the tournament calls the people who get in and lets them know that they've received a bid. The district tournament was two weeks ago, and so we had to wait two weeks to find out whether or not we actually got in, which is why it was so nerve-wracking. Yesterday, I was waiting for the phone call. I saw a couple of social media sites posted that schools that did not get in, for example, K-State did not get in. I saw that posted, and I thought, well, when is the news going to come? No phone call, no phone call. All of a sudden, I see an email come in. The director emails people to let them know if they do not get in. And so when I saw I had an email from the director, you know, the worst thought came to mind, and I thought, well, we must have just missed the cut. I opened the email, and he said, "Darren, for some reason, I can't find your phone number, but congratulations on your team's bid to the National Debate Tournament. I'm going to ask them to come up if Kristen Russell and Ryan McFarland, and then assistant coach Scott Elliott could come forward to be recognized." Kristen is a sophomore from Lansing, Kansas. Ryan is a sophomore from Hutchinson, Kansas, and you don't have to stand right behind him, you can stand out there. And so this is Ryan's second qualification. Him and his partner Tom qualified last year, and so to repeat is amazing. And just to give you an idea of some of the other teams that got in this year in the second-round process, that completed the field, other schools on the list included Harvard, Wake Forest, University of Michigan, Michigan State, Emory University, so some of the heavy hitters in the country, and we got in among that field. And so Ryan, excuse me, like I said, Ryan qualified last year, and so he also qualified to the National Parliamentary Tournament of Excellence last year. And then again, this year, we actually leave Thursday for that tournament in Reno. And so to find out yesterday, we're kind of scrambling to figure out details for travel for the end of the month when the NDT is at Weber State in Utah. But Ryan's the only person to have qualified back-to-back for both the NPTE and the NDT in the history of those two tournaments. And so that's pretty exciting for us. And like I said, I can tell you, the last two weeks have been nerve-wracking. I put together a spreadsheet of all the schools who could possibly get in, figured out every statistic possible, and every night I spent about two hours staring at it for the last two weeks, wondering if we were going to get in, and hopeful, but very nervous. So we're excited, and it's a big deal for them, and we appreciate all of the support. And just to kind of give you some insight into what it takes to get there, that day that the district tournament started was the day we had the big snowfall here, and it was in Oklahoma, and us, and KU, and K-State, and Wichita couldn't get out of town. And so they delayed the tournament by a day, and I called Brian, and I said, "Are we going to be able to leave campus?" And he said, "You absolutely will." And by the time we got here, campus police had already rounded up folks from the maintenance pool. They were down here with the big trucks unplowing the snow from behind the cars so we could get on the road. So it truly does take a, a whole effort of the entire community and the campus, and we appreciate all of the support. So congratulations to these folks. They have done an amazing job, and I think they'll do amazing things at the NDT and once they're gone from here, and pursuing their career elsewhere. So thank you.
Wow. Congratulations. Congratulations to you all, and the legacy grows here, it just continues to grow and expand and add to it. And could you tell us a little bit about the tournament, like where it is and when, and what, you know, what the, the topics are, the teams?
Sure, yeah. Do you tell us what the question is, too? I'm always interested. Just what the question every year is.
Sure. The NDT is going to be held this year at Weber State University in Ogden, Utah, and it is the 27th of March through the 1st of April. And so we'll be out there. The debate topic, Kristen, would you like to tell them the debate topic word for word? I talk all the time, I'm a maker talk.
Yeah, not sure what it is word for word, although we did qualify. The topic this year is about restrictions and incentives towards crude oil, natural gas, energy production, and also alternative energy resources like solar and wind power.
Well, appropriate. Yeah, it's great. Outstanding. Other comments?
What future plans for the, for the two of you?
Wichita State.
Wichita State? Oh, for both of you?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Very good. Staying in Kansas, I would like it.
Yeah, the Wichita coach is very excited to get them, that's, Wichita coach was there when I did my graduate work at Wichita State, and he's very excited to have this team coming on board next year, and he looks forward to having them for a couple of years, and hopefully Ryan can be a four-time qualifier to the NDT. That's the, that would be exciting, and certainly Wichita State's goal.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Ryan, I have, I have a personal question. Is, does the Hutchinson News highlight your successes? That's my hometown, and I'm hoping that they have taken notice of your success.
I'm honestly not sure.
Well, let's get that in there.
We'll get Alan to add.
Alan has written a great story already.
Hutchinson News, yes.
Are these events videotaped?
They can be. We have some debates, we actually have some debates of ours during the year that are already, we have a camera that we can take and videotape debates, and so we do that from time to time. Partly do it because they take them back and then watch them on their laptop and use them to practice and to get better and to, when Scott and I judge debates, we'll videotape schools that we're judging, so then they can watch those also to see what other schools are doing in debates and to help prepare. So yeah, they can be.
Outstanding.
Wow, just outstanding. Congratulations, we're so proud of you, and we look forward to hearing the results air in another few weeks.
Next month's meeting, yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Appreciate it. That's, that's a good lead-off there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, now you're going to top that.
Well, I'm going to try. In addition to my report, since I submitted my report, I've got a couple of updates to give you. Yesterday, Dr. Min and I had our phone interview with HLC, the Higher Learning Commission, about the degree qualifications profile. The interview, basically, this is the second year of the first phase. So they basically wanted to know our impressions about the DQP and give them any feedback to Lumina. So we went through the interview. We have a final report to give to HLC on this whole project, and it's due June 15. And we've pretty much already done the first draft, so, because I don't like to delay these things. So we've pretty much done the first draft and hope to have it out to them probably within the next week or so. Yesterday, I don't, you probably got the email about the Nilo website, the National Institute for Learning Outcomes Assessment. They contacted me in fall semester. They had heard about the work that we've done with degree qualifications for HLC, and they asked us for information because they wanted to feature us on their website. And so we provided them with that information, and yesterday we were there, which was exciting. April 7, Dr. Min and I are going to the HLC Annual Conference. We will be making a presentation about our work with the degree qualifications. And also, on April 19, we're going to Johnson County Community College. They have a day set aside for assessment, and we have been invited to present our program there as well. So that's my updates.
Oh, so Johnson County Community College needs to learn from us, do they?
I'm not going to touch that with a ten-foot pole, sir.
Oh, I just wondered if I heard that correctly.
Yeah.
All right, are there questions or comments from the board?
Oh, I did, the refer, transfer agreement.
Finished.
Is.
The one with Pittsburgh State?
Pittsburgh State, but I, and then it said we have one in place, but Kansas State. What is our goal as far as, you know, do we establish it with all the region, trying to establish it?
We're trying, we've got one now that is going to go in front of the dean's council with Wichita State. And the goal is that, I don't think we're going to have too many students taking advantage of this, but the purpose behind it is that if you have students who start here and then transfer to one of these universities without getting their two-year degree, that we will work in collaboration with these universities so that they will be alerted when a student goes to, say, Wichita or Pittsburgh. And if the student completes a certain number of credit hours at that university, they will then transfer those credit hours back to us, and they'll be able, we will then award them the two-year degree. So it's designed to help students. It's a reverse transfer, and we'd like to have as many of those as we possibly can. As I say, we did one with K-State, Pittsburgh State, and Wichita State. Now, I've pretty much gone through the whole process. It has to go in front of the dean's council, and then to Dr. Givens for her signature. So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion to accept the report. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Vice President for Student and Administrative Services report. Brian is not here today. Is someone substituting?
All right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Dee McDowell will stand for any questions. We have the report, board members, we have the report.
I do move.
I am not going to attempt.
Pay the bill.
I just have an introduction. That's on my report. I would like to introduce to you two employees, Pam Sykes and John Olson. John will be our Coordinator of Transcript Services, and Pam is our Graduation Specialist. And so, we are very, very excited to have them on board. They are very excited to be on board, and we're trying to do all that we can not to scare them away. They are coming at a high peak time, but their enthusiasm has just been delightful, and they assure me nothing that has happened up to this point would frighten them away. John Olson.
Good morning.
Good morning, John. Could you give us a little bit about your background and why you accepted the position?
Yes, I have worked, I've been lucky enough to work in the Kansas City metro area at several different schools. Recently, St. Mary, now University, Penn Valley Community College, several other schools in the area, and I've always just had a love and passion to help students graduate. This office specifically handles incoming and outgoing transfers of transcripts, as well as incoming credits that need to be evaluated for graduation purposes, and we help verify all of those graduates from our school as a completer. And so, that's a very exciting thing, and that gives a lot of job satisfaction in educational administration areas where I see it. All the work that the faculty and staff do for students, I see that, and every day, it just, I have a great feeling about it, and that's what keeps me in the educational administration field.
All right. Great. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
And here is Pam.
Well, good morning. My name is Pam Sykes. Thank you for inviting me to this party. I appreciate it. I think, and I did tell Dr. McDowell, I do reserve the right to let her know, maybe in three months, how much I appreciate my invitation, so, thank you.
Could you give us your background?
Yeah, you're not going to get off that easy, Pam.
Oh, Chairman Ash.
What's your background?
Which I'm very familiar with, by the way.
Well, actually, in the fall of 1973, I entered this institution as the recipient of the Law Enforcement Assistance Association Program, which at that time was, again, federal funds that were developed for the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department. At that time, I was a police cadet, and I entered the hallowed halls of this institution. I shared a few classrooms with Chairman Ash. Dr. Ben Hayes, at lunch the other day, did the math for me, and he said, you know, Pam, that was 40 years ago. And I said, I think you're not correct. Somehow, take your shoes off and count again. So, I spent eight years as a commissioned police officer in Kansas City, Kansas, and at that time, I was also married to a police officer in Kansas City, Kansas. And coming to the reality that perhaps that was not my intended career path, I secured a position with the United States Postal Service. I worked in mail processing facilities. I worked my way up, did a little computer programming, some supervisory things in bulk mail acceptance. I was a postmaster, and for my last nine years with the Postal Service, I worked in customer service areas from bulk mailing, drop shipments, and that type of thing. I retired in December of 2012, after 27 and a half years, and I thought it'd be very nice to spend a little retirement at home, but you know, January and February hit, and I decided that I probably was not quite done. And I was very lucky, my husband was sharing job potential applications with me, and one of them was the graduation specialist here at the college, and in some way, it spoke to me. I think, I think you might have written it for me, so, thank you very much.
I'd just add that Pam's husband is our part-time Campus Officer, Jerry Sykes, who has posted at the back of the room.
To keep me from running away.
For those of you that don't know that, now you know that. And they're both longtime friends through the Police Department, so, welcome aboard, Pam.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you. All right. I would just add a note on the athletic fields. I swapped email with Vice President Bodie the other day. We're just waiting on the UNFI government to finalize their inspection of the work and give us a sign-off certificate, and then, you know, we can use the fields and the facilities and so forth. If anyone has any additional information on that or contrary information, we'll take it. Note?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Under Finance, Mr. Chair, I move payment of the bill.
Do we have?
Did we accept the report?
Yeah, we need to accept this report first, if we're willing to accept it.
I'm going to accept the Vice President.
Questions?
Student and Administrative Services report. Excuse me.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Now, Wendell has a question. No, I was, Ray took care of it. Okay. All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion, or the report is accepted, and now JD.
I move for payment of the bill.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Pay the bills, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The financial report, we have available to us.
Yes. Finance Committee did review. Please note that for February, we're at 37% of remaining budget. Should be at 33%, so, it's always good to have a higher percentage in the actual. And the trend, February continued to be the trend that we have seen since November. So, that is for your information.
Move approval of the financial report?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Accept the financial report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The report is accepted. Recommendations, you see the four listed recommendations there?
On recommendations, Finance Committee did review, including the amended. I did have conversation with Vice President Bodie about number five, and actually, it was great that the crew was here this morning. We need to have another loader to be able to handle this, the kind of storm that we had. And also, the current one that we do own is over 11 years old, and so, and this, we are purchasing at no interest. You know, I love that.
Yes.
I hope the rest of you love it, because I think that's great. And then being able to apply what we had leased this for four months, and that they are applying that to the purchase, I think is this an exceptional deal. Number two in the recommendations is actually a follow-up. We had a community comment, you might recall, from an individual who talked to us about our campus officers and force, and some of the, I'll call them perceived needs, and we happen to be in accord with the one perceived need, and that is vehicle for our chief and additional vehicle for the campus force. So, you know, we, you go through the Kansas Highway Patrol for those, so they're huge, but they're already equipped with, I guess, I would just call them police.
Police gear.
Police gear. And so, we think that we're getting very good vehicles for that purchased price. So, we have those there for your approval.
Just by way of comparison, one new car would be about $25,000, and probably a couple more thousand for equipment on top of that. So, we're getting two vehicles here for this amount. So, it is a significant cost savings for the college. Move approval? Second. And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, recommendations are accepted. Okay, item 12, committee reports. Do we have any reports from committees?
Just will say that the Facilities and Finance Committee did have a joint meeting, and we'll probably continue discussion and then let the trustees know in our April meeting, updates on construction costs and how we might go about covering those costs.
Okay. Anything from Advancement Council?
We're just, we have one more meeting to plan. Peggy's been a great help. This is for the Community Listening Project revisiting, for the Advancement Council. Leota's helping with our food. We got the wine approved. They're very important with resolution, and I am looking forward, on the next meeting, to kind of sharing some of the strategic planning issues around marketing and communication, so that we'll be able to kind of report out a little bit on that to the community that was involved in the Community Listening Project, so I'm looking forward to that. But once again, it will be April 25 in Upper Jewel, and we would love to have faculty and deans, as well, of course, Board of Trustees members there, to meet the community, and so the community can be next.
Okay. I have nothing significant to report. Dr. Givens has given significant information from KACC or ACCT. Board members, you know the stuff I've been forwarding you, so try to keep up, you know, with those items. But obviously, this development that occurred yesterday is one we're going to have to really watch and visit with the legislators about. I don't know how much success our delegation, you know, can really have. I do know our delegation supports our positions there, and they know and they understand the issue. So, we'll continue to monitor that and report as we have information.
No, and I had another question about that. When you stated that the current proposed legislation does not mention or include community colleges, does that mean that the exemption is really not in there?
Are you talking about the concealed carry?
I'm sorry, yes, with the concealed carry. I'm still a little confused on that.
There are a couple of different versions floating around, and there are some amendments being proposed to that. One of the amendments was an opt-out for universities, including, you know, community colleges.
Okay.
Four-year opt-out to allow the local boards to determine what the policy would be, is one version. But stuff is bouncing back and forth up there so rapidly that what actually gets finalized is uncertain at this point. So, there is one version up there that does include that.
I was hoping that was, I was thinking it was still there.
So, whether it's going to gain enough traction, because there's a couple of amendments being, you know, added to it, some people are for some of those amendments, some people are not. There seems to be some support for the opt-out for the universities. There seems to be, you know, some pretty good support for that, but depends on how much they, you know, they try to attach to it, water it down.
Is there, is there still the move to, if there is an opt-out, that after four years, it goes back to the legislature instead of an automatic renewal?
You'd have, no automatic renewal, you'd have to opt-out every four years under the amendment version that's currently, the most current one that I've read, which was Saturday.
Yeah, okay.
So, if they did something yesterday, I haven't seen anything on it yet. So, we're watching it really closely. Okay. Yeah, we're getting ready to go to item 13 here, and we would, I would ask Darrell, how much time do you believe?
I have 100 miscellaneous. I think the board needs to recognize and thank Valerie Stamberski for being the interim Athletic Director over the last three months, you know, this year. Work as the head basketball coach for the women, it's, we appreciate the time you've spent as Athletic Director, a good job you did on that, so, thank you very much.
Okay, yes. I didn't see her there. There she is. Okay, all right. Absolutely. Thank you very much, Coach Stamberski, and congratulations, Wendy had a pretty good year, and so, we appreciate your work. Okay, approximately, how much time, Mr. Wendell?
15 minutes.
15 minutes? Okay, so, I need a motion for item 13.
Second.
All right, for how much time? 15 minutes?
15 minutes.
And a five-minute break to transition there, okay? So, we'll break, and we will be back. Is there going to be, there's probably not going to be any action?
No action to follow.
No action to follow, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move that we come back in session.
Second.
I don't know. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're back into, yeah, we are back into session, and we're at unfinished business. Is there any?
Move for adjournment?
Second. Motion and second for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
It's a great feeling of knowing the best is yet to come. Giving you the best that we have. Giving you the best that we have. And we're made in life better.